Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here. The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Kama County Herald on January 4th, 2019. All I want to please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get started with A and F.
Okay, engineers' report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start the report with some good news. We were notified that the borough received a $140,000 grant from the NJDOT for the reconstruction of 106th Street. That roadway is scheduled to be in your 2020 road program and that's earmarked to start next fall. The repaving of Paradise Drive was completed last week and with that, we can finally close out the 2018 utility and road program contract. On November 14th, we had a pre-construction meeting for the 2019 utility and road program. At that meeting, the contractor indicated that they are scheduled to start work the first week of January. They might be able to get here earlier. They would start on 87th Street and then proceed south. We are continuing to work very hard on the 94th Street sanitary sewer pump station design because that is a linchpin to your FEMA storm sewer pump station. We're working on an expedited basis and I'll be presenting a list of recommendations to Jill that she can share with Mayor and Council that will cut six months off the project schedule. So it is on our radar very hard. We continue to work on the 114th Street sanitary sewer pump station improvement project and the beach ADA rampant pavilion replacement. The beach ADA rampant pavilion replacement will probably be requesting a motion to bid within the next month and have that work completed before the summer. In regard to the new lifeguard building, we provided a proposal on November 18th to effectuate the permitting and design phase of that project. Upon borough authorization, we will proceed. I would just like to take one minute here just to go through our year-end summary letter that we provided to Mayor and Council yesterday. Just to kind of summarize through the letter. Through December 1st, 2019, our office has performed the following. Planning and zoning escrows on three projects. Reviewed, processed, and inspected bulkhead applications for 11 projects. Reviewed, processed, and inspected 115 street opening applications. Reviewed and processed 66 lot grading plans. Provided project management, engineering design, right-of-way services, utility engineering, environmental compliance, and construction observation on 10 capital projects. And we worked on three grant loan initiatives. Over the past year, our firm worked approximately 4,600 man-hours in serving the borough. Some significant highlights that occurred during the year. We provided approximately 200 in-house office hours at no cost to the borough. We successfully assisted the borough in creating a new street opening ordinance and application procedure, which hopefully will make everyone's life easier. We assisted the borough in securing $340,000 in grant funding from the NJDOT for the reconstruction of both 88th and 106th Street. We successfully completed the conceptual designs for the borough's lifeguard building and got it to a point for you to start making decisions. We successfully managed three construction projects. The Second Avenue bike lanes, 95th Street bathroom renovation, and 82nd Street tennis court projects, which resulted in reductions to the original contract's amount of $35,000. So those contracts were closed out below their original awards. We implemented a new web-based GIS mapping system to display utility infrastructure as built, including photographs and testing reports. These are new features that the borough did not have in place before. And we were happy to help you secure a bid for your 2019 utility and road program, which was approximately $300,000 under budget. So essentially, we want to thank you for the opportunity to have served the borough this past year. We're very appreciative for that opportunity.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
Okay, tax collector.
Hello. So it's December and December is a busy month in the tax collection office. We do a lot of housekeeping. For instance, in an effort to maintain that 99 percentage of collection, a 99% percentage of collection, I send out two sets of delinquencies. We post our year-end penalties at the end of the month for anyone having balances over $10,000. We work on our end-of-year reports. Interestingly, we have a foreclosure coming up. It'll be my first foreclosure ever. I don't even think Mrs. McClure had any foreclosures. We haven't had a foreclosure in a really long time. And this will be good for the borough. It's, the property is 209 109th Street. It's an eyesore, so everyone will be, should be happy about this because the lien holder's going to foreclose and clean it up. That's all I have on, in taxes. And for utilities, I prepared a report for you. It's a 10-year history of irrigation consumption, just for information purposes. It's interesting what you find when you start collecting data like this over a period of time.
It's way back up.
This is specifically tailored to irrigation meters only.
Only.
And that's the highest usage quarter, correct?
Yes.
It's the July, August, September. When was it that we really changed the rates? Was it 2012, 2011 to '12?
We're still changing them. This is, 2020 is an off-year. And then the last of that five-year period is 2021.
Wasn't there one point, though, years ago, where we really changed it and restructured it?
A couple times. In 2002 is when we changed the rates for the irrigation water, where we did the tiered rating system. That was in 2002. And then the first real rate increase we had over a 25-year period was in 2008.
And the number of actual meters is going up significantly.
This is just the irrigation meters.
Yeah, so there was, yeah.
And now the trend is changing. When the quarterly gallon allowance was, when the quarterly base rate was only $24 and $26, everyone wanted an irrigation meter and we used to give a 13,000 gallon allowance. Now we're at $108.50 a quarter. People are shutting them off and having them taken out. The trend is reversing. Interesting. It's very interesting. Any other questions?
By you?
The levy.
So we...
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, so we, last time we went through, we looked at how much revenue we need and to a certain extent, how much revenue we are projected to need based on debt service and future budgets. And then we structure a rate table based on that need. You know, we try to get, we try to get the minimum amounts to collect so much and then, you know, and then different tiers as far as excess and all that. But it's based on the budget and then future budgets. And by future budgets, mostly it's debt service on those future budgets. There's a P and L that's at the end of the year. It's not called a P and L, but it's in a sense a P and L. Yeah, you'll get it too. It's part of the, one's part of the annual financial statements and then the audited financial statements. Like I said, the rate increases that Debbie's talking about, the recent ones, were all driven to compensate for this increase in capital expenditures and the debt service that's caused by that.
What's a P and L?
A profit and loss statement. Again, because we're municipal, we don't have a profit and loss, but we have a, we have a statement of...
Whether it's a liquidated or non-liquidating entity.
So is that, when you say based on the budget, is that, is that just the budget for SOR, the SOR department?
Totally.
For those rates, yeah.
And to elaborate a little bit more on what Jim said a few years ago when we had this, the start of this multi-year increase, we brought in the municipal auditor to work with us on looking at what we were projecting in operating expenses and what our known debt service was going to be moving forward and what we anticipated to come up with the years that we felt we needed the increase. And that's what Debbie was talking about. And I believe next year, we're scheduled for another rate increase based on all those projections. I would suggest, moving into 2020, that you start to revisit that again to review and see if what we had projected a few years ago was sufficient or whether you have to readjust that.
Anybody else have any questions for Debbie? Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Tax assessor?
Good afternoon. Excuse me. It's been, November's been busy, but, you know, not as busy as other months this year. We had 15, 15 certified lists. Of those five were demolitions. I had 11 deeds in November, seven usable sales, four nonusable. And the next thing I have coming up is changes for next year. My proof book is due December 13th. And then my final book is due January 3rd, 2020. So that's pretty much what I'll be working on the next month or so. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be. Lovely afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Construction and zoning?
Good afternoon. Fairly strong month in the construction office. Eight demolitions, eight new house permits issued. It's, looks similar to last year. I met this morning with a team of people for the Villa Maria to demolish that and start the process with design and construction. Just preliminary, try to get some better ideas as far as local ordinance and construction codes are concerned, which was a little somewhat helpful to them to start the process. So it was about an hour meeting. We actually helped on a few things, you know, at an early stage.
Yeah, and that'll help them in their planning process, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't anything really heavy. Just some concerns about the footing, I guess, in the pilings that they have on-site. It was, it was a positive thing. Get a better idea as far as how they're going to lay this thing out. And then they'll have questions concerning the dead-end street that they're proposing to put in at some point on how to handle that with the engineer, with Mark, and as far as the design process. But that's not going to be right up front. We're going to work more on trying to get the permit issued as soon as they can, which they're hoping to try to get this thing issued by March, April, and get this thing in the ground then, so they can get the pilings and demolition done and pilings in before the summer. I think they have a chance at getting there, hopefully, if they're...
So that's their plan, is to have that going before the summer, so we would have nobody there this summer?
That's where they're working.
Okay.
The great thing about that project compared to downtown is that they have a huge staging area.
Yeah, yeah.
And it won't, there will be no congestion at all for any streets. They won't take up, I would assume that they, if they can keep everything on-site with contractors and vehicles and machines, it'll be, it'll be on-site. So it'll keep it off of 111th Street and Second Avenue, which will be great for town.
Yeah.
Any of the adjacent property owners. We'll strongly suggest that they try to do that since they have enough property. And I guess the good thing about that is if they don't propose starting that street, that won't take up any more room from the construction of the building itself. They want to try to have this thing down, I guess, around, hopefully, January, February, completely demolished and then start the construction.
And they're not proposing to do anything with that street till 2021, '22?
He didn't really lock into that, did he?
Okay.
I mean, it's still so far out, I guess, as far as logistics with any planning board application that would have to come in.
Okay. Interesting.
Good.
Zoning follows suit with basically the same numbers as a year ago for the amount of permits. The revenues taken in was slightly more, same with building permits, signifying that maybe the value of structures is going up, but the quantity of permits is basically the same. And zoning board next month will be hearing the second-floor golf course wants to renovate at 239 96th Street. So that'll be before January 6th zoning board, do a renovation up there. Basically the same, but they want to increase the dimensions, the size of the building up there, the accessory structure, if you will. And so that's it, that's moving ahead.
Questions?
Doesn't appear to be. Thank you.
The total fees taken in for November in the Borough Clerk's Office is $1,008. We are waiting to send out our renewals for all of our licenses and permits, but as you can see, we'll be discussing the fee schedule tonight. We'll get that situated first before we send out our renewals. Thank you.
CFO?
Okay, right now, just primarily working on any of your clothes, which includes revenues mostly. Coming up with ending revenues for each fund and where we stand as far as fund balance.
Planning board?
Planning board met on November 18th. It was a quick meeting, it seems like for the first time in a long time. We did, under new business, Paul Cates brought the board up to speed on the flood mitigation committee's proposals for the changes in lot grading. Have we discussed them here in council? I could not remember. The changes that the flood mitigation was talking about as far as decreasing impervious coverage by 15%, allowing for 15% of semi-pervious coverage, increasing underground water storage requirement, and eliminating grass between the curb and sidewalk. So Paul Cates brought, planning board up to speed on that being something that is being discussed in flood mitigation. Our subcommittees, really nothing new to report on the valet subcommittee, outdoor dining, and the courts, the committees continue to meet and make progress. Not a, not a whole lot of progress in any of the committees, to be honest with you at this point. The courts is creating standards that, the court committee is creating standards to show to local architects and kind of see, make sure that what we're proposing, how would it look, things of that nature. So that's where we're at on that, is for the architects to take a look at some of the standards that we're going through. And it was explained at planning board that in looking at changing the zoning there in the courts, one of the things that has come to our attention is some public safety issues that are there as far as the wiring and as far as just getting in and out of those narrow congested streets. So it has, it's bringing some other things, like everything else, it's the old onion. So as you continue, there's another layer to look at. So there was discussion on that with what's being seen in the court committee. And that's about it. Like I said, it was a quick meeting. Any questions? And that's planning board.
Public works.
Oh, we're going to have Rocky today. It's a treat.
We have a guest. Guest appearance.
Nice job by all the employees over the weekend.
Thank you.
Very good job. Like things are put up and gone and put up and gone.
I say, well, we do it.
And it's done like that. Very good job.
We have, we have to thank Avalon because our large machine is down and we were able to borrow theirs to move. Actually, right now, they're helping us remove all the docks, so.
Okay.
It goes to them because they responded to our need when our big machine to move the large equipment was down, so.
Oh, good. Give it up. Thank you, Avalon.
We did receive some calls today and yesterday from residents stating the same thing, very happy with everything that happened.
Oh, that's nice that they actually made calls and said, "Good job." Yeah, nice.
That's together with, hey, I was here for the weekend, pick up my trash. But yes, we got a lot of calls saying the same. So I hope that everyone got the November report.
Yep.
And I hope that you guys got a chance to look at it. So it's funny because I look at this report and, and the date. And for example, at the league, we go through different vendors and right away they'll say, "Oh, your season is, you know, quiet now, it's starting to slow down." And we never slow down. We change gear, so. We, on the storm that we got back in October, I just want to report that we were very lucky, very fortunate, that the winds were just right for our beaches because Avalon got hammered pretty bad. I believe the Wildwoods did as well. And we were, we were just forgotten. We didn't get no damage other than...
Snuck by.
Yeah, some of the vehicle ramps did lose some of the sand at the bottom. So we closed them, took us about a day to fix them and open things back up. So debris was minimum. So we were able to get everything back in shape and just get moving, so very fortunate. So that being said, you know, as you guys know, we, we travel the beach every day. We make sure that every, everything that we see with the crossovers, the decks, any debris is picked up, repaired, whatever is needed out there to make sure there are, residents can enjoy their afternoon walks. At the marina, everything is off out there. Water is turned off. Right now, like I said, the guys are working on removing the docks. Same thing, we constantly monitoring the services that we provide to the slipholders with ropes, with water, with whatever they need and we repair things as they need it. Streets, the kiosk, the kiosk were winterized. The parking meters were removed. All the, all the internal parts are back at the shop. So then part of the report is the amount of DGA that was picked up, which was 38.33 tons. That is to do repairs to any holes that we, or ditches that we do dig for water and sewer services. Both trash was picked up, October 15, and was completed on October 17. The bulk total was 29.82 tons. The scrap metal, 2.36 tons. White goods was .77 tons and e-waste was .79.
Did you notice any difference since the new ordinance? Since the new ordinance allowing people to recycle?
Not really. I didn't because I think that, you know, I think that people still kind of respect the old ways. They don't really know, you know, the changes that we have approved yet. Once the word gets out, I'm sure that in the beginning of the year, it'll be more...
You didn't notice much, though, these times?
I, I didn't.
Okay.
Not myself.
Yeah.
Can't say that for the other guys, but...
Yeah.
But I think that is, is going to help us tremendously to remove some of the stuff that reality doesn't do any good for us anyways.
Yeah.
So it allows people to, to pick up things that maybe they can reuse, recycle, and...
Repurpose.
That's what it's all about, repurpose stuff, absolutely. Automotive, the list is long of the different vehicles that we take care of. I'm not going to go into all the details. But as you guys know, you know, we have a team of three mechanics and we service all vehicles, our boats, you name it, we take care of it. So those guys, they just do a tremendous job, including some of our fire equipment as well. Buildings, as you know, we take care of all the special events. The Kids Harvest Festival was, we put in 12 regular hours and 13.5 overtime hours. Of course, you guys know that includes all the setup, what we do during the week to get things in place, the cleanup, the event itself, and whatever in between. Kama County Snowplow Rodeo was 25 hours, you know, regular hours. That is because, you know, we got to make our trucks look nice, you know? We did have one of our team members got a prize, a second-place prize for class C.
What's involved with the snowplow rodeo?
They set up a course and, which is... I'm sorry?
At the airport?
Yes, at the airport, which is kind of, they have all kinds of zigzags and they have parking, parking areas and so on, where the guys have to take the big rigs, the small rigs with the plows and just make believe they're plowing without hitting the cones. There are vendors there, there's guys from all different towns around this area, and they compete. At the end, they all, you know, they go, this best of show, who hit the most cones and you know, and things like that, so.
So how, how do we typically do on the, in the radio?
We do well. We do well. We only got one trophy this time, which I was shocked. We usually do much better than that. But we do real well, believe it or not. I mean, the guys do enjoy it and it's like a morale, it's like a morale thing as well. I'm proud. We have a couple plaques in the shop that say so.
Very good.
So anyway, so the beach cleanup, it was 10 regular hours. Kendall Harvest Festival was 30 regular hours. As we, you know, we take equipment over there and we pick it up. Full decorations were put up, as I'm sure you guys have already seen. The 82nd Street, the new building, new brackets were, were built and delivered to Tina and then we were able to go and mount them. These brackets are to hold the, what do they call those things, sun shades. So they're all in place and they were able to come out, measure the distance between them and so on. So once those shades come in, I'm sure you'll see them next year. But at least now, we are ready for them. Fire extinguishers throughout all our buildings and vehicles were inspected. Repairs were made to the 96th Street clock because I know some of you noticed that it wasn't working.
Is it now?
Yeah.
The right time?
Supposed to be.
Okay.
It's not? That, we have to, there's, there's a company that deals with the clock and it seems like they only have one technician. And he was out, I think it was sick leave or something, he was out for a month plus. So we, we placed a call, but we just had to wait for him to return. So we cannot go in and do anything. We'll, we'll check the time to make sure, maybe when the time went back, it didn't, who knows? I'll check. I'll make sure that's taken care of as soon as possible. Then grounds, all the islands were trimmed, cleaned. Anything that needed to be removed was pulled. And the beds on 96th Street, 95th Street, the same way. All around our buildings, all the street ends that we have, any type of beds were, again, cleaned. Flowers removed, things trimmed back. Some of them to, so we can put lights on them for the Christmas season. were, again, cleaned, flowers removed, things trimmed back, some of them to, so we can put lights on them for the Christmas season, for the holidays. And then, all the flowers were removed from all the urns, including all the hanging baskets, which I must say, they, in my personal opinion, they look beautiful. I think that, I know we have added a few and we get into that point where we might need to get another guy to come in as well, but I truly believe that they do beautify our town, especially when you come in. I think that definitely does something. For many years, I remember seeing it coming into town. Once you got to 96th Street and 2nd and 3rd, everything looked beautiful, but before that, it was not. It was not so. We have changed that. You guys have changed that. I applaud you for that. So irrigation in all our properties have been turned off and blown and winterized, and hopefully, next year, when we turn things back on, everything is fine. And water and sewer, you guys see the town. When a house comes down, there's new services, there's new sewers put in. It's us out there breaking our streets and making a mess as well as the contractors. So you can see in the reports how many streets, you know, how many properties we do. Markouts have been insane. That is when we go for any type of, any company that does any digging in town, they have to call for a markout. So then, the phone company, the electric company, the gas company, ourselves, we have to go out there and mark the streets to make sure that whoever is digging knows where those utilities are. So hopefully, there's no, you know, incidents or accidents. So total markouts for October was 137, which is a lot of them. When you think about it, we have a four-man crew for the water and sewer crew, and that's part of what they have to do on a daily, daily basis. All of, I think I may have mentioned it, but I'll say it again, all our buildings, seasonal buildings have been winterized as well. So anything that is not open year-round has been winterized and closed for the season. As far as water, the total pumped in October 2019 was 19.9 million gallons. Comparing that to 18, and 18 was 15.9. So, and the daily average in 19 is .64. Of course, there's a lot of digits after that, but I don't think you need to hear all those. A million gallons, and 18 was .51 million gallons, so we have used more water this year. Not a whole lot, but enough to make us think that, as I said before, that we may need to revisit that water allocation sooner than we may have anticipated. Solid waste, you know, the winter schedule has started, so we only check those houses that we know are year-round residents reside in. Anyone else, or anybody else needs to call in, and then we'll go and pick up their garbage. So, there is a list on October, same thing for the solid waste disposal comparison tables or totals. So there is a list here of municipal waste, single stream, and so on and so on. The total tons disposed in this October was 215, and last year was 188. So obviously, we have seen a pretty significant, you know, increase on that. And the fees have also gone up, where last year only, last year it cost us $6,261, and now, this October, was $8,270, so. And the amount of contacts to Public Works, that is, you know, people calling in, also including the contacts from within, came out to 941 phone calls that we received. And that's pretty much concludes this report. If anybody has any questions?
Did anybody, we had that resident, I think, on 89th Street, had a problem with a floating dock that washed up on the back of his property, like an abandoned dock in the last storm. Had we been able to address that or help him out? He said he talked to the police department. I believe the email said he called Public Works.
That was referred to the state police, and the state police responded back to.
Right, but did they do anything?
I don't think so.
Or is the dock still out there?
I'll have to check on that.
We owe the guy an answer, I guess, whether.
Absolutely, absolutely. I could not give you one, because I don't have one, but I could go back, look into that, and then get back to you tomorrow.
It was on 89th, right?
Pretty sure it was 89th. I think his name was Ernst, last name. And, and I just, I don't know if I remember this right, but, you know, since we decided not to pull the sand down off the dunes, so we have these crossover issues, the engineer is working on a fix for that in the out years?
Well, you were out on the beach the other day doing it, last week. You were clearing the.
Yes. Well, we continue doing that, but I believe that, I believe that Grant and Mark have been working on that. I believe.
Partially.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the meantime, what we do is what we always done, which is go out there and clean things up.
Getting it done.
What's that, Rocky?
In the meantime, what we do is what we always done, which is go there with the machines, clean things up, move things out of the way, make sure that people have easier access to the beach, so.
Anybody else? Questions for Rocky? Thank you. It was nice to see you.
You're welcome.
So we're just gonna include, I guess that's utilities as well, okay? And under utilities for discussion, the Beach Utility Pole, 98th Street.
Okay, I guess there was a request made by a resident or property owner on the roadway, where they have organized with their adjacent property owners, and they want to go to decorative street lighting. I guess they were referred over to my office. I then collaborated with Jill to say, it's my understanding that Atlantic City Electric needs approval from the borough to allow these property owners to put these decorative light poles in, and that it's gonna be done at their expense, but the borough needs to approve the light pole installation. Because at the end of the day, I believe the borough will own those poles, perhaps they'll pay for them.
So we have to approve the type of pole?
Right, we had, yeah, we had left it a while ago with Atlantic Electric, because we had had a lot of other people with the same type of request, and council had basically said that we wanted to utilize the same type of light pole that we have on 96th Street and 3rd Avenue. And we've been working with Atlantic Electric, trying to get them to add the poles that we use to their list. They did not. They kept telling us, "Wait, with the new merger, there may be a new list." I reached out to Ronny Town again last week. They still have not changed their pole, so.
Do they have a couple? Like, do they have a couple that they?
They have a couple you can choose from.
That you can choose from, and the one that we use is not among those?
Correct. And we asked if they would.
Add it.
I thought it was a simple request, but apparently, it's not, because it involves tariffs that they would have to go to BPU for. The pole that this gentleman is requesting is a pole that he's seen that Avalon uses throughout their town. So basically, it would have, it comes back to you guys whether or not you still want to just utilize the same pole that we have on 96th Street.
And the picture that we all have is from Avalon?
Correct.
That pole is the one that they want?
Yes. Otherwise, they would, any new pole would have to be Atlantic Electric standard pole, which we said, moving forward, we at least want it to be LED, because that saves you on electricity over the years.
We approved the poles that were going on the street ends years ago. 110th Street, the property owner wanted to put something fancy like this, and we, to best of my memory, because if you go see it, it is a regular pole, and the goal was to have a arm so that the light went down, and not this kind of pole, which light doesn't go anywhere. So, am I understanding that this is the same situation?
So the pole you're talking about is up at 110th?
It's at more than 110th. If you ride the street ends and anywhere where the power is all underground.
And that's something that Atlantic City Electric offers?
Yeah, it was Jack Barrigan's house. That's why I remember it, because he had, he went, the neighbor put it on the other side of the street, or vice versa, and he had it moved, but the sample of the pole, I know, is on 110th Street, and as you ride down, you will see others all match that.
They're not decorative.
They're not decorative. They're attractive. They're sensible. It's a pole and a nice light with no wires hooked to it.
Yes, and those poles, right.
The purpose of the light is showing the bottom of the steps going down on the beach, so that there is a light that is functioning
Right.
to light the street ends. I wouldn't go to this, 'cause I don't think this is going to provide any kind of light, at least at the street ends where you need light.
So what you're talking about is just street ends?
That's where I drove and looked. I don't know what the address of this person is. I wasn't, I mean, what street is this person talking about?
98th?
98th.
98th and the beach?
Beach entrance on 98th. We spoke last week about the replacing utility pole for the beach entrance on 98th Street.
That's what I was, okay, well, I think we should ride down and look at them, because they're very simple, and they're not gonna go out of style, and they're functional. That's the way I would, I mean, everybody likes pretty, but I think sensible.
And they're already at some beach ends?
Right.
So you have consistency?
Yeah.
You tell them to go take a look at that.
I'm sure they're still making them, because they're at more than one street, and to now change and try to do something like this, I don't think is... I mean, our lights at our parking lot look nice, but that's our parking lot, and you still get light. But to change to a light like this, that's just my two cents. To keep them consistent is nice. So, ride down and look at the street ends. I did. I didn't write them all down, but there's a lot of them that are all the same.
I would think consistency is best.
Well, I think you're, you're gonna have 40 beach ends with 40 different lights on.
Otherwise, right, so just remain consistent and.
You know, I mean, it's great that they're going underground wires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We applaud it for that.
Sure, I agree with that. I just think that the purpose of the light pole is to put light on the ground to see where you're walking. This, I don't think you're gonna get from this.
So do we want to do that? Get in touch with the individual here and tell them, "Take a look at the other ones at the other beach ends," and that's what we want them to do, and that's what's available to them? Right?
Yes.
And we would like them to be consistent.
Okay. Makes sense to me.
In fact, I can, now I remember it. This was the kind of light that was put up by the neighbor across from one of them, and we made them take it down, if we find the minutes, 'cause I can remember Mr. Barrigan not being happy, and then the right kind was put up on the, in front of his house.
I was telling, I was telling the mayor, if you go up 2nd Avenue, the first five or six blocks in Avalon, each end has a different kind.
Yeah, and it just, and these are not ugly.
And that's what council wants to do.
The ones that we have are not ugly. They're just appropriately sensible.
Okay. You can call them, Jill.
No problem. I can do that.
And it's more than one street. It's almost everywhere where they're down and underground that we have them.
And on discussion of fee schedule for 2020.
Okay, I had a couple changes, and I'm not sure whether there's any other that council was considering. But we had talked about the beach tags, and Avalon is in agreement with our recommendation that the preseason tags would go from $23 to $25, and then after May 3rd, they would go to 20, from $28 to $30. And then the weekly would increase by a dollar, so they would go from 12 to 13. I did not have any other recommendations for any increases, however, some council people from time to time bring up whether or not you want to charge a fee for the kayak, so I'll throw it out one more time, but that's your call. And I don't know if there was anything else, anyone else had a desire to increase or felt it was warranted. A lot of these permits people will start coming in in January to get them. That's why we wanted to move these forward now.
And I'm the one that believes that we should have a fee for the kayaks, since we have brand-new, very expensive aluminum racks to hold them, which are sitting down there on the lot, getting ready to put them in, I guess, for next year.
How many more can we accommodate this year? Rocky, do you know? If I mean, with these racks, we can accommodate a lot more kayaks, correct? Like double?
Carrie knows.
Carrie, like double? What's that? Wow, so we can go to 180.
And they cost us... The new racks were at least $20, $30,000 for the racks. I mean, it's just, it's a user fee to me. We charge for the hobie cats, we charge for the boat ramp, we charge for all the things listed here, and it's on borough property, and it's gonna look beautiful with those new racks. I just feel that we should have a fee for the summer, and that's how I feel.
I think when we discussed this six months ago, where, I know some of you weren't on council then, but I think we had a consensus that we were gonna charge a fee for this, for the kayak storage over the summer. The only question was how much. And we said that when we put the new fee schedule out, that's the time to address it.
And what did we pay for the racks?
Close to $40,000 is what I remembered.
Yeah, it was just shy of 40, I think.
I mean, they're beautiful. They're gonna last for a long time. That's, to me, that's a big expense to then offer free spots. And if it's what?
Each?
What, when can people put them in, the kayaks? How many months?
April.
So they're the same as the boats and the same as everything else?
It's April till November, what Carrie's saying. And I'm thinking for that amount of time, if we charged $100 a boat, and you can put a kayak there for $100 for that many months, is a good deal. Safe, locked.
How many kayaks are?
We can get almost 200.
180.
As we continue to speak in our A&amp;F meetings, we keep talking about ways that we can generate revenue without having to increase taxes. So if this is one way that we can, even just to recoup the kind of money that we've invested in the racks themselves, I don't think it's a bad idea.
So at $100 apiece, we could recoup the money in two summers?
Yep.
$100 isn't unreasonable?
No, I don't think so.
Doesn't sound like it.
And then you all can, you, I don't, I forget how you did it last year, but now that you're gonna have more, you had a process that you, that Avalon?
It's a lottery to homeowners first.
Homeowner first, right.
So that was how, and there was a, there was a system that Diane used, that she was happy with, and it was effective, and there was less mayhem. So whatever that was can easily be replicated.
Well, I, you know, I kind of think we ought to proceed a little slower here, maybe 50. I think 100, you know, I, I'm not sure about that.
That's not even $20 a month for a safe place for your kayaks.
I understand that. I understand that, but.
Thoughts?
We're going from zero to 100.
I think that's reasonable.
There are going to be complaints, one way or the other, because people are used to getting it for nothing. So, we already anticipate the complaints. Just, we have to put that out of our heads. When we decide that we have already invested X number of dollars in these racks, if we really want to recoup it, we have to do the right thing.
These are stainless racks, if I recall.
Yeah, they're really nice ones.
The only thing is, I'm, I think Ray might be right, maybe overreaching a tad, just because if we're gonna pay them off in two years and they last 20 years, it's.
Yeah, I'm not looking to pay them off. I'm looking to charge to use the borough property the way we have in other ways. That's what I'm looking.
Boat trailer storage is $150.
Right, for the whole winter. Well, no, half, half a year. Boat storage and dock.
Once you meet halfway, make it 75. I don't have a problem with 100.
I don't have a problem with either. It's just, what do you think's best?
It is a very nice venue to put your kayak for $100 for April, May, June, July, August, September, October to November 15th?
And there is, I mean, Carrie puts time into it, Sue puts time into it, Diane puts time into it. So there's employees that are processing this. Now it's going to be twice the amount. So, I mean, I, I just think 100 is very sensible and a good deal.
We're going to get the argument that Avalon doesn't charge anything. That's what we're going to hear. But we have to be prepared for that, that there will be complaints. But these are nice racks, these are new racks, these are safe racks, and we just spent a lot of money on them.
The actual price was 22,000?
200.
200, sorry.
I stand corrected. I was told 40, which blew me away.
Yes, 22.
Even that blows me away.
Well, why don't we do this then? Okay, we'll add the $100 to the schedule and then we'll vote on it.
Okay.
When, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Got it.
Okay. Have any of the others been ever increased that?
That need to go up?
That need to go up?
Well, the cat and dog and the amusement license and the alcoholic beverage are pretty much set by the state, right? Vendors is 350, we don't have any. Taxi licenses, 100, we don't have any. Vehicles on the beach.
That's been slowly going up over the years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Peddlers and solicitors, we don't have any of those either. Boat trailer storage. The only one that I would say you could look at would be the boat slips. I don't think they've gone up in a couple of years. Looked up slightly with them, if you want to. We, we have four still open this year because we don't have the room for bigger boats and people now want bigger boats. We, you know, they don't want a 17-foot boat, so we haven't been able to accommodate a lot of them. So if, there's two ways to look at that.
So right now we have four available?
Yeah, and they've been available all, all summer.
I think if they're sitting empty, then I wouldn't raise them.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we've got that and it's consistently staying empty.
Parking meters, I don't know.
Is that it? Any other ones? Nothing? Going once? Okay.
All right, so we'll bring that forward to the next meeting then.
Okay. That's the fee schedule. We got nothing else for discussion. What's the time? 3:53. We can do our closed session now. I think we've got the time and then we can take it off the regular meeting that way. Okay. So, stand by. Sue loves when we do this.
She's got her switches here.
All right, so my resolution for this is going to remain the same, because it's the only resolution.
No, there's resolutions before it.
Oh, there's one before it. So 172 is going to become 173 and 173 is going to become 172. Correct me if I'm wrong, so I, right?
I can't, I don't even have my, I don't have the play.
I got the play.
What do you need, sir?
What's this one? All right, because, you're correct, because we're adding the water shed management. So, all right, no, we're good. So closed session becomes the first one.
Do we want?
172.
We have to discuss.
Okay, okay. All right, resolution one, resolution 2019 S-172. Somebody offer it.
Mayor Council, I offer a resolution 2019 dash S dash 172.
Second.
I left out my paragraph, so let me back it up. At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go in the private session. We would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back in the public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone may bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. So now, resolution 2019 S-172.
Mayor Council, I offer a resolution 2019 dash S dash 172 for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzik?
Yes.